Okay, so I'm going to call the special meeting of the Temple City City Council of May 11, 2020 to order. Before I ask for roll call, I've got a little bit of things I have to read here. Pursuant to section three of executive order N dash 29 dash 20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, cities are allowed to hold city council meetings, conferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to the meeting telephonically, please call 1-646-749-3112. Your access code is 252-939-901, or you can access it through the city's live webcast. Before we begin our meeting, I want to remind those who are calling in that your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is during an agendized item. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do that now. Indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment upon. Okay, so I will now ask for our clerk to... Please call roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Polter Yan?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here.
Okay, we will now move on to item three, our public comment. I would first like to start by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak.
Yes, Mayor. We... No email requests to speak, excuse me.
Okay. And do we have anybody who is calling in, wished to comment at this time? Do we have any public speakers?
Your microphone has been unmuted. I do have email public comments still.
Okay, so do you want to read those now?
If I may?
Please.
Okay, the first email to the mayor and city council of Temple City. First, I would like to thank the entire city government and every employee of Temple City for the outstanding manner you have performed during this horrible period. We appreciate your dedication. Over the last two years, I have worked with Fernando Viscara. As a member of the Kiwanis Board of Directors and then as vice president, he has demonstrated his commitment to the people and the youth of Temple City. He believes in service. I have noticed that retired city leaders seem to withdraw from public life, not Fernando. Kiwanis needed him, and he was always there for us. A fixture at Temple City events, serving ice cream, cotton candy, and pancakes, helping the kids with building a float for the Camellia Parade, setting up, taking down, quietly supporting me as president, sharing his business experience, especially his conservative yet generous talent for financial management. I'm a fan, and I recommend Fernando for appointment to the city council. I think all Temple City residents are worried about what the future will bring. We are surrounded by frightening disease. We question the loss of an elected, engaged, and beloved city council member. We are trusting you to appoint the most qualified candidate. That's the first email.
Okay.
I have two more.
Go ahead. Are you going to say who that email is from, or you're not going to say that?
Um, you know, I... They didn't request... I have their email and who they are, but they didn't request to be read into the record, their ID, so...
Mr. Murphy, handle that.
Unless they specifically requested that their name be withheld, I think we can probably presume that they were willing to put their name behind what they submitted. So why don't we add the name?
Okay, the first email was from Cynthia Vance.
Okay.
The second email is from Pollyann Worthwin. Dear Ms. Quo, this letter is to show our support of Fernando Viscara to become a city council person in Temple City. We need him to return to the council. Fernando has a history of dedication to the city council in Temple City. His service to the city was exemplary. He did a great job and was dedicated to serving the community. Fernando Viscara is needed now more than ever on the Temple City Council. Good neighbor, John and Pollyann Worthwin. And I have one last email. From Mr. Robert Hepler. My name is Robert Hepler Jr. I am writing in support of Fernando Viscara for the open seat on city council. I have known Mr. Viscara for over 35 years, both on a personal and business level. He has served a community and county in several capacities, as a Los Angeles County Hospital Administrator, as a former Temple City Council member, and as a mayor. Over the years, he has displayed ignorable skills that require operating a city of over 38,000 people successfully. A team player, he has always handled issues with fairness and intelligence. Excuse me, sorry about that. During his term in a combined effort, he participated in the redevelopment of Rosemee Boulevard, La Stunis, and Gateway Project, to name just a few. He believes in transparency, and through his many years of public service, he has proven himself during the most difficult of times. Mr. Viscara would be a prized asset to our city council, yours truly. Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other call-ins for public comment? Anybody would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will close public comments. Okay, now we are ready to move on to item number four, our new business. And this is for further action on appointment to the councils. Council will continue the appointment process to fill the vacant council member's seat. Uh, before we get into the questions, I would like to, at least for the benefit of everyone who is listening in, and of course, our candidates, to kind of briefly go over some of the ground rules that we're going to be covering tonight. So, um, we... Each candidate, of course, will be allowed up to five minutes to tell us about yourself, including your background, um, you know, why you think you're qualified, whatever you feel that is relevant to what we would like, what we would know or want to know regarding your qualifications. Uh, each member, each council member will then have the opportunity to ask questions. I will call on each council member in order. Um, after each council member has the opportunity to ask the candidate questions, uh, you may get some follow-up questions. And, um, and then, uh, once we're done with the follow-up questions, we will go ahead and go through the council members one last time to see if there are any additional questions they may have. Um, now, at the end of the interview, uh, each of you will be given the opportunity to ask questions yourself, uh, anything that you would like to know regarding, uh, the process. And, uh, we will do our best to answer those questions. Now, uh, keep in mind that, uh, this matter is on the agenda for further action. We may or may not make a final decision, uh, this evening. Uh, that will determine, uh, be determined, of course, once we've completed the interview process, okay? So, um, the order, uh, was selected by random, um, by staff, and we will begin with, uh, Mr. Peter Zovak. We will then move to Mr. Fernando Viscara, and lastly, Mr. Serge Hadad. So, uh, unless there are anything else, I think I've covered pretty much everything, council members that we discussed earlier. So I'm going to go ahead and we'll start with our, uh, our first candidate, Mr. Zovak. And so I'm going to throw it over to you, and you have the next few minutes to introduce yourself to all of us and tell us about yourself. So, Peter, it's all yours.
Thank you. Uh, just to check, is the audio working?
Perfect.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council and staff, uh, for this opportunity to discuss with you this opening on the council and my interest in it. Just a little bit about myself. First, let me just say that, uh, my wife and I have been residents of Temple City since 1993. We raised our three children in Temple City. Um, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration, a master's in organizational leadership. Uh, I've been fortunate in my career to have been able to work on both sides of the dais. In terms of setting policy, I served four years on the Temple City Planning Commission from 97 to 2001. Uh, and then I served four years in the Temple City City Council, uh, from 2001 to 2005, with 2005 serving as the position of mayor. Um, on the other side of the dais, in terms of implementing policy, I've been a long-term municipal employee, working in local government, primarily in and around the San Gabriel Valley. I started my career at the city of West Covina, uh, working in both the human resources and finance department there. I moved on and spent 10 years at the city of Alhambur, working in the development services department there. Uh, worked in redevelopment, economic development, and housing, and did secondary work in building and safety and planning. And then for the last 21 years, I'm still going. I've worked for the city of Glendale. I've had multiple management positions in my tenure there in the 21 years. I'm currently the Assistant Director of Community Development. The Community Development Department is made up of five divisions. It's made up of planning, building and safety, economic development, code compliance and licensing, and housing. Uh, in my capacity, I oversee the code compliance and licensing division, as well as the housing division. And in that capacity, I oversee 50 employees. I have an annual budget of approximately $48 million. Uh, a good portion of that being federal funding, and with that comes a lot of restrictions and regulations and, uh, and everything else that comes with that. And we've been able to successfully utilize those funds without issue ongoing for a long number of years. Um, my work there involves a lot of activities and projects that directly impact the community and ranges and everything, from code enforcement activity to business licensing, fee assessments, housing programs for Glendale residents, and affordable housing projects for lower-income residents. Uh, the work involves a lot of community outreach, uh, involves a lot of citizen input, and cooperation and interaction with a wide array of both professional and local and regional partners to help accomplish the goals that we have there. Just to highlight just a few of the recent accomplishments. Uh, just this past year, I was successful in authoring three proposed state bills and taking those three bills through the legislative process. Uh, two of those bills reached the governor's desk. Uh, of those two bills, one was vetoed by the governor at the 11th hour at the last minute. But the good news is that third bill did, uh, was signed by the governor and passed into law on January 1st. I've also authored a federal proposal as well that's been picked up and is working its way through various House subcommittees. Um, I recently oversaw the acquisition of three parcels, uh, in Glendale totaling about five acres. Total cost of about, acquisition cost of about $25 million. We're now in the process of master planning those properties, uh, creating development standards for them, uh, making recommendations on zoning changes, and preparing the issue an RFP and RFQ, uh, for which we will find a developer to develop the sites. Uh, my last project of note was a two-acre site in which we developed 57 affordable homeownership units, built around a half-acre mini park that was financed through the project and then gifted to the city in perpetuity. Uh, and then all around, uh, the acquisition rehabilitation of three historic homes on that property. So it's a very large, uh, project, this one. That recent acquisition would be even larger. Um, we've created and implementing a $7 million basic income program where 1,000 qualified households will receive $300 a month for 24 months for their housing expenses, and we'll be studying those households over time to see how that money's been able to assist them. So, um, that's just a little bit of what I do, what I've been doing now, uh, my current experience. Um, I'm very much interested in the position. I'm interested in serving the term and doing it in a way that moves Temple City forward.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Peter. Okay, so, um, I will next move into our council questions. And, um, I'm going to go ahead and start with Mayor Pro Tem Yu first. If, uh, do you have any questions for Mr. Zovek? Uh, you have to unmute, Vince.
Ah, I'm talking to myself again. Uh, Mrs. Zovek, uh, perhaps you can share with us, um, some of your vision for Temple City?
Sure. Um, what's interesting in this scenario, it's a little bit unusual in looking to fill a term, a vacancy that's on the term, um, as opposed to, uh, the position where someone is running on a slate and a platform, uh, in which those are made known to the voters. Um, I would have to say that, for the most part, I've been fairly happy with what I have seen coming out of the city in the last eight to 10 years. Um, I've been very pleased with some of the projects that I've seen moving forward. I've kept abreast, uh, of some of the strategic goals that the city has put together and feel very, um, confident that the city has been moving in the right direction for a number of years now. Uh, in terms of what I would like to see moving forward, um, there's not a particular project per se, uh, or big picture item that I would want to come in and, um, uh, impress upon the council. I see this role as coming in, uh, to the position, uh, helping, facilitating, moving things forward and doing it in a way that is respectful, uh, to both the council and staff, doing it a way that is positive for the community. I think there are a lot of things that I, I agree with in moving forward, and I don't see, per se, I wouldn't be able, I, I think I, I have general concerns, I think a lot of people do, with regards to public safety and being able to maintain that. Um, I think there are some unknowns and fears that, uh, are creeping in with regards to the economy and the post-COVID-19, um, and how we get out of that. That would obviously impact a lot of our revenue sources coming in, not just for Temple City, for every agency really. And so it'll be a new normal moving forward in how to adjust to those economic conditions.
Okay. Any follow-up questions, Vince?
I don't know. Thank you.
All right, councilmember Sternquist, um, any questions? Seems that we may have lost Councilmember Sternquist.
Brian.
There you are. Okay. Any questions?
Yes, um, hello, Peter. Thank you for submitting your name. Um... My question would be that, uh, Councilmember Fish, that you would be filling her seat if you were appointed, was involved in quite a few essential and important organizations as the layups onto. One of them was Contract Cities. Since you served on, um, city council, I know you're aware of what the Contract Cities model is and the organization in itself. Um, she also was our representative for the Clean Power Alliance and the, um, delegate for the upper San Gabriel Valley, um, Water District, and a few others that aren't as, um, I would say in the forefront as these are. Um, my question to you, and I guess to all the candidates, will be, um, do you have the, the time and the willingness to take on those roles should the, um, mayor and the council decide to appoint you? I think that, um, I know in particular my, um, regional activity with COG and, um, the other organizations. I am really stretched thin, and so I think I am specifically looking for a candidate that can fill those roles that, um, Councilmember Fish did.
Correct. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Sternquist. Uh, yes, I think I do. I gave that some thought, as a matter of fact. Knowing that, uh, with the position comes possible appointments to some of the boards, uh, that the city serves on. I served on some of those boards in the four years that I was on council as well. I remember Foothill Transit. I remember the San Gabriel Valley COG, uh, and things along those, uh, along those lines. Um, I do think I would have the ability to, uh, make the time to attend, uh, meetings. Uh, traditionally, a lot of those meetings took place after hours as well. Uh, but, uh, for those meetings that do place, take place within the, during the day, I certainly have time to be able to take away and request time off and be able to do that. And it was one of the considerations I, I thought about, uh, before announcing my interest in this position, would be the time sensitivity of everything. Yes.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Councilmember Sternquist. Uh, Councilmember Mann, any questions?
Oh, yes. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Uh, thank you, Peter, for your interest and submitting your name for this candidacy. We're very grateful that you're willing to dedicate time to fill in the spot. Um, as you know, um, the city, we're dealing with an unprecedented crisis, much like the entire world with COVID-19 impacting every aspect of our lives. Um, and I think it would be interesting to hear, given your background in municipal services, if you're able to name maybe a couple of things you think that we as a city, both operationally and/or policy-wise, how, how do we change as a result of this? Like, how do you imagine, like, what aspects of city operations or what aspects of city policy do you imagine being reshaped by the COVID-19 crisis?
Uh, it, it could have a tremendous impact, uh, something along the lines of the Great Recession that we had went through, um, in terms of financing. And then if your financing is impacted, then your ability to support programs, projects, and staff is impacted as well. Yeah, most immediately, sales tax, uh, revenue will go down, um, possibly followed by property tax reassessments that might take place over the course of the next year, two years. Uh, you might be seeing that as well, which is a good portion of the city's budget. Businesses will have been suffering and will continue to suffer. I think that, uh, once the environment is cleared to open back up in terms of all the businesses operating, I think there'll be a number of businesses that won't be coming back. And I think it represents a challenge for the city, but it also represents an opportunity. I think the city might be able to take that situation, uh, turn it and become proactive in re-establishing the type of businesses that might want to come in and facilitate those that we think might best serve the city. Um, the biggest example of that would be the Kmart Center. Uh, and the vacancy that exists there now, and the ability to, uh, redevelop that in something more viable in this post-COVID-19 economy. Um, obviously, there'll be obligations and investments will be impacted as well. So you'll have to look at, uh, the long-term investment strategy and whether or not, uh, that needs to be adjusted or could it withstand, uh, the impact that, that is happening or when will happen. Uh, working with other agencies is going to be very important. Uh, the county has stepped up very strongly, uh, in this COVID-19 situation. I think that, uh, they provide a good example, and they're a good partner in moving forward and, and having, and being able to move, uh, the cities and the county itself forward as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we get back to any second questions, I just want to, um, Peter, uh, kind of, yeah, I know you touched on some of the, during your opening remarks, but maybe a little bit more in-depth. What do you believe your strengths are and what maybe are your weaknesses? Your opportunity for a, uh, self-assessment, I guess you could say. Tell us a little bit more about...
Mayor Chavez, your audio really cut out, so I didn't get...
It's cutting out over here.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so, um, tell us a little bit about your strengths and also perhaps what you believe are some of your weaknesses.
Um, my strengths are in my knowledge of city government, as I stated earlier. I think it's, it's, uh, 31 years and in the positions that I have held. Um, there are, um, many things that I have learned over time. Um, those are all things that I could bring to the table to help ensure a seamless transition, um, in an appointment to the position, um, and be able to hit the ground running and moving projects and policies forward. My strengths, the additional strengths that I have is that, um, 31 years, I've only been at three agencies. Uh, I've been fairly loyal, uh, to the agencies that I've worked for. I've done excellent work for them and have only moved on when the opportunity, uh, for advancement really has presented itself. And then every time I have moved on, I've, in my opinion, thrived in those positions and, uh, and continue to move up. I'm a trusted member of the senior management team in where I'm at, and I think those are all qualities that, uh, um, will add to the position, uh, if appointed.
How about your weaknesses?
In terms of weaknesses, um, you know, there are, there are, um, there are times where, um, I, I don't know if anyone personally likes, uh, criticism. Uh, so when it does come, and if it comes, it's being able to, uh, take that, um, um, in stride and trying to understand how it comes. I think you can always, I can always, uh, be better in doing that and receiving that. I, I really, uh, thinking to most of my evaluations and discussions I've had with supervisors and, and over the years. And I would say that, um, there's not necessarily a weakness that, uh, is out there worth noting, uh, beyond and how you take criticism. Uh, that's not to say that there aren't, uh, but they're minor in nature, I, I think, to not necessarily highlight in that position.
Thank you. Fair enough. Okay, uh, does any other council member have any follow-up questions or additional questions? I'll first go back to, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Yu. We can't hear you, Vince.
Sorry, I'm talking to myself again. I have no more questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist, any further questions?
Um, I have to, Peter, I know, Peter, you may refer to the fact that it's going to be...
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Oh.
Cutting out again.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me here now, Peter?
No.
No.
Hang in there. We'll get it. I know, I apologize for the... But unfortunately, this happened, so... Uh, Cindy, why don't you go ahead and try to ask a question one more time?
I'm here.
Hey, go ahead.
Here. Can you...
All right, you're still breaking up on us, um...
Here now.
Why don't we take a break?
I can't hear Tom.
Okay, can you hear? Go ahead, start again.
Okay.
Is that coming through?
Can you hear me?
No, it's breaking up quite a bit.
Try and see if you can ask, ask for a minute.
Okay, we'll go to, uh, Councilmember Mann. Do you have any follow-up questions?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I don't really have any follow-up questions. I think, Peter, you've covered pretty much everything that, uh, I've been very thorough, I believe, in your answers, and, uh, thank you for being, uh, forthright with us, and, uh, we'll give a couple, maybe we'll give about a minute or so for Councilmember Sternquist. I know she had another question to ask, and, uh, bear with us for, for a minute or so. We'll see if we can get her back online. Um, perhaps, Brian, maybe some, uh, maybe staff can call her and maybe ask the question in, in her stead? Can we do that?
Staff's in the background trying to do that just right now, sir.
Thank you. All right, bear with us. Sorry, apologize for that, gentlemen. As you know, uh, technology is what it is sometimes.
She may be back, sir.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, we, go ahead. We can hear you. Hello. That's about it.
You can give a, just one, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor Chavez, just one more minute. Thank you for your...
Maybe I'll, while we're waiting, I'll I'll just, I'll just add uh that to thank you, Mayor Chavez, for taking uh my interest in the email that I had sent you.
You're very welcome, Peter. Uh.
I did. I I should say, though, in that email I sent you, I I did indicate, I said, it's the council's desire to um appoint someone new and and bring them along. I certainly understand that from within the community. The the desire then, though, was to look at someone with experience, uh, to look at someone that might have served before successfully, then definitely that is something I'm interested in, and that that's how it happened, so.
Well, thank you for your comments. Uh, Chris, certainly, I think, uh, my council members share with me a desire to to do the best we can, go through the candidates, and of course, you know, in our opinion, select that uh who we feel would best meet meet the needs of of the city and the council. Uh, there's certainly a difficult decision, you know, that probably was gonna say this at the end, but I think uh all three candidates uh bring a lot to the table, and there's no question about that. That just makes our job much, much more difficult, but thank you again for for your interest in doing that. I know you've been part of the city for quite a long time, and uh and uh we do appreciate everything that you've done in the past, no question about that, so, thank you. Is Cindy back?
I'm back. Uh, I'm fine. I just wanted to uh thank, or just, we can go ahead and move forward.
Okay, you didn't have another question?
Um, I did, but I don't know how how we're doing on time.
We're good. We're fine. Go ahead and ask a question.
And, Peter, can you hear me?
I can now, yes.
Oh, thank you. I know you had mentioned um that that the city could be faced with some financial challenges, and I was wondering if you had some just off-the-cuff ideas of um, if you could pick two things that maybe you think that we could do to help with the budget, what would, what do you think that that would be?
I think there are a couple of strategies that have been out there within uh a circle of of cities. You could look to pre-funding uh your obligations uh that might exist out there to uh lower some of the interest costs that are out there. You could uh reassess your investment opportunities that are out there to try and maximize that, to make up for whatever type of uh gap funding exists. Um, as I said before, you can look at how you might want to position your business climate uh for when businesses are returning, help facilitate the type of businesses you might want to see within the community and the types of businesses that might be getting, generating the revenue that you could utilize for other sources. Then obviously, you're also going to have to look at ways in which you could leverage your funding. And there are already have been multiple programs at at trillion-dollar levels uh coming out of the federal government. There's going to be programs coming out at the state level as well. Um, and so even I I imagine that county uh agencies will be uh dispersing funding as well. So you, so you really have to look at how you can best leverage those funds uh to achieve what it is that the funders want you to achieve, but also what other goals you could um accomplish. So it it'll be difficult. There's not gonna be, just like the Great Recession, there's not gonna be one uh particular thing that will help you get through it, but if you have multiple things, it can soften the blow quite a bit.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Do we have any other follow-up questions by any of the council? Uh, hearing none. Peter, I want to thank you again for your interest in this position. Uh, we are now done with uh with your interview. You're welcome to stay on, or uh if you have uh uh anywhere else to go, certainly can be excused, so I'll leave that up to you.
I cleared my, I cleared my slate for the evening, so I'll, we'll sit back and mute and watch.
There you go. Thanks.
Thank you.
So uh uh next, we're going to go to Fernando. Are you about ready? Well, ready. Okay. All right, so I'm, as as you heard the ground rules, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you and uh get, give you the opportunity to tell us about yourself, and then that'll be follow-up. So it's all yours. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I almost, you know, I was sitting here thinking, as Peter was talking, and when I think more about it, that I've actually, I feel like I've had almost two separate lives. My life is uh on the council and my involvement with Temple City, plus a a very intensive relationship in in the jobs I had with the two counties that I worked for. And um I I think one complimented the other, I'll just say that. I lived in Temple City for over fifty years, and uh my whole family were all graduates of Temple City High School. I left the council, I was turned out uh four years ago, and um that left a a vacuum in my life because I enjoyed my city activities. And one of the things that I did was I joined the the uh Kiwanis. And Kiwanis was a vehicle that allowed me to stay very involved with the city. I've um they all know, of course, the Con- Constance in the Park, which are not occurring this year, but since then, I think I've attended every one unless I was off on vacation someplace. And both to attend it, but also to work it, uh, to raise money for the various things that the Kiwanis do and and contribute to.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, I'm just kidding. I'm, I'm, the wheels are turning slowly.
No rush. All right, take your time.
The other things I was involved involved with in the city were just about every ac- activity that that's citywide, uh, including the 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 uh Familia Festival, everything that goes with that. Um, I worked with with the Key Club to to put a float together for the kids to bring it down the street. That that level of minutia, which which is not big-picture stuff, but it it's an integral part of the city. One of the things that that we've done on the Kiwanis and and we continue to do, although it's be a little tough this year, and that's raising money for for scholarships and providing vouchers and meals to to families, Temple City families that are in need. Um, well, that, that's kind of what I've been doing with the city. And I think it's an integral part of of what goes on with the council. Um, I'm interested, obviously, and always have been with with the budget. And uh I think we're still working around twenty-two million dollars with a surplus. Is that about right? Um, I know that many of our services are contract services, including our planning, our our refuse, our parking enforcement, the sheriffs, the fire, and and yet we still have our employees that um currently we continue to pay. I've been um Hello?
Yeah, we just had some background noise. Go ahead.
Okay, I've been a, on any number of committees. The um, one of the ones that I really enjoyed was the Public Arts Committee, and Tom, you were on that with me at some point. Uh, as a result of of that activity, we put up the murals that we had on the library and on on the uh the uh headquarters for the school district. Um, I was hoping that 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 would continue to expand and maybe something can still happen. I don't know. Towards the end of of uh my last term on the council, I um, I think that was about the time we were getting organized. Our 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 employees were organizing. And I found that interesting. That was about when, I believe, Mr. Cook came in. And uh it it, I had um, one of the things I didn't mention before was that that I spent over twelve years in human resources with L.A. County, so I had a lot of that background, and I found that interesting, and I I think the city did a great job in dealing with what could have been a much larger problem. And um the the employees, we seem to have some harmony with uh with our labor force. Couple of the groups I was previously involved with were Contract Cities and um and the CAU, which uh uh Councilmember Sternquist is very involved with. And if I were fortunate enough to be appointed, I I would sure uh trade you for that, Cindy.
I don't think
Won't give it.
Huh?
Good luck.
Won't give it up unless they keep me up.
I know she doesn't want to give it up. Um, that, that's kind of an overview. I'm 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 interested in what we're gonna do if we're ever gonna get back to the Lost Tunas, developing the Lost Tunas corridor. Um, I think we need to find a way to approach the uh the Kmart site. I mean, that's just going begging there. The um, the the virus, I think, is gonna set us back for a while on doing anything there. But nevertheless, there's, there's a lot of opportunity there. I also think on 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 a national scale, I would be concerned about what the the uh ramifications are of of the uh of the COVID. But on a local level, we had, we've had such a vibrant uh business district, including the the uh, the both the malls, um, Roosevelt and Lost Tunas, that I'm not really all that worried. I think that's, all of that, and even up and down Lost Tunas, things are gonna come back quicker here than in most places. And I will make that prediction and and I'll work to uh to make that happen. Hope I didn't extend myself too far on that one.
Good.
And I, the one thing I didn't mention was that I was an administrator with L.A. County also, and then with with um the County of Riverside Hospital Administrator. And the the biggest budget I had was was the budget I had at L.A. County General Hospital. I had approaching nine hundred employees in a thirty-million-dollar budget. So uh I got quite a bit of experience in dealing with those kinds of numbers and being sensitive to the ramifications of any decisions you made in terms of whatever. So that's, that's about it.
Fair enough, so thank you very much. So we will now move on to questions. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Mann first. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor Chavez, and uh thank you, Fernando, for your interest uh in in this position. Um, and my question, again, you kind of touched upon it, is related to the COVID-19 situation that's impacting everybody. Um, and you did kind of touch upon your prediction for our business community. Uh, but in terms of policy and or city operations, how do you imagine us changing or adapting? Like, what what aspects of what we're doing now do you think will be different and and how like, what policies or operation changes would you push to adapt to what we've learned from COVID-19?
Well, first of all, and not to contradict you, but but I'm not sure we've really learned anything yet because smack dab in the middle of the darn thing, and 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 all we can do is predict what the ramifications are gonna be. The the emphasis has has been on the loss of jobs and the loss of 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 business of one form or another, big, small. Um, a lot of what we do and what any municipal municipality does is dependent on revenue. And of of course, our revenue streams are are property taxes and the large-degree sales tax. Um, I don't know that property taxes are gonna be highly affected. Everything I've seen lately says that so far, nothing has affected uh real estate. So I don't know what effect it's gonna have on our ability to get things done within the city. Uh, drains on on our resources, I think, will primarily come, and I don't mean drains in a pejorative way, but but in in a realistic way, will probably come more from employee-related things, unless we have some great catastrophe that necessitate a capital project of some sort. So I, I guess I'm saying there's so many unknowns, I'm I'm hesitant to try and give you a specific answer.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Yu, any question? Unmute.
Yeah, first unmute, self, learn my lessons. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and then thank you, Mr. Viscara, for taking the time to come. Um, you already touched on sort of your vision, so I'm not gonna repeat that question, but maybe I ask a little um slightly in a slight different way. It's not every day we run into residents who lived here for fifty years. And perhaps, Mr. Viscara, you can talk about some of the things you enjoy, you you think is ideal for Temple City, and how those may change or you want to keep uh for the future. A different way to ask the vision question.
Temple City used to be sleepy hollow uh and with what I would consider probably um middle or less than middle-level incomes. With, with, of course, exception. And but 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 I think the city had a vision then of having a family-oriented community with good schools. That has endured. And I think that that's where we want to remain. And the beauty of it, for those of us that have been here and continue to stay here, are um property values and safety. We're, I believe, the fortieth safest city in the United States, right? Didn't we just get that distinction?
We're about there. Somewhere in there, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, I think that's really something. And and it says a lot for the city, and it translates to uh great property values. And we keep seeing the homes improved and people really wanting to come live here to to be in this environment. I think we have to try and protect that.
Okay.
Right, thank.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Sternquist, question? Got unmute.
Can't hear.
Can't hear you.
Okay, you can now?
Yep. Can hear you.
Well, Fernando, I know that um you have a couple of days of golfing in in your retirement. So I'm wondering, I I know you mentioned that you have served on a few of those organizations before. Um, I asked Peter the same thing because I think it's it's so critical for our community to replace our Councilmember Fish with someone who is willing to commit quite a bit of time to the council, to be visible, to be present, to, you know, when when you are at Ralph's. I mean, you know, now, maybe not so much with a mask, but I'm finding even with a mask on, people will say, "Oh, are you the mayor?" And I'll say, "Oh, no, I'm not the mayor. That past mayor was Nanny Fish," because they frequently would get us mixed up because we're both tall and similar hair, but I realize that people know they're council members in the city. So will you have the time to invest to make sure that that continues if you would be appointed to this seat?
Um, let me echo echo what you just said, only as it applies to me. At Ralph's, I still get recognized as a council member. Or, "Weren't you on the council?" Uh, yeah. And then I'm asked a question that I can't answer. But as far as time is concerned, that that's really not a problem. I play golf twice a week. I've already had to adjust those days on numerous occasions. because of, of, well, Kiwanis was one and, and other things. Uh, my, my wife decided to take a certain day off during the week, and so I had to no longer play golf on, on that day. So you make adjustments as, as you go along, and it's only two days. Other than that, I'm free.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Fernando, so I can't believe it's already, it's been four years already since you've, uh, since you left us. It's, time flies, doesn't it?
Sure does.
I have a simple question for you. What have you missed most and what do you most look forward to if you were selected, um, for this opening?
Well, part of it is, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm a little dry mouth. I, I miss the, the, the learning process that goes with, with being on the council. I'm sorry, I'm turning around for a glass of water.
That's all right. Take your time.
Yeah, um, because in, in one form or another, it's always an education. I, I, I miss the, the, the involvement in the day-to-day business of the city as, as it affects, or as the council affects it and, and knowing what's going on. Um, it, it, it's all those things. I, I miss other cog uh, and other committees that I've been on. But because that too gave me perspective, whoa, like, like with the cog or or Contract Cities, you know what's happening throughout this area. And, and I always find that, that interesting and enjoyable. And I, uh, I enjoyed working with, with, uh, a council where I felt that we, uh, respected each other and could work well together, and I think that helps things forward, which I think is necessary.
Okay. Tell me again, how many, how many terms did you serve? You served?
Three, three terms.
Three terms, okay. Thank you.
Three full, three full terms.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, are there any follow-up questions by any council members? I'll go back to, uh, uh, Councilmember Mann.
Uh, no, I don't have any. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protemu, anything, any follow-up?
Uh, no follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Sternquist?
I'd like to ask Fernando the same question regarding the budget. If you, I know you mentioned that property tax has, um, really not taken a hit. Real estate actually has been pretty stable, and I'm surprised, um, recent, um, stats on property have actually shown an increase in the last thirty days in Temple City. So it's nice to know that the property tax will possibly stay stable. But is there something specific that you can address, um, that you think we can do regarding the budget, um? Maybe what you think we could do that we're not knowing, or what we're doing that we shouldn't be doing?
That's a tough one. Um, I guess the easy answer is, I can't think of anything right now without knowing more about what we're doing with our current budget.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Um, you know, I, I apologize. I forgot to ask Peter. I'm, I think he's still with us, and I'll give him the opportunity if he wants to. I told each of you that I would give you the opportunity to, uh, ask any questions that we have. Fernando, do you have any, any questions?
No, I, I think I'll leave well enough alone.
Okay, great. Uh, Peter, are you still there?
I don't see him on the screen.
Yeah, I don't, but I, he'll be, Peter, are you still there? You can unmute your microphone? I don't know if he stayed or went. Well, maybe he'll join us back again, and I'll give him the opportunity. If you're still out there, Peter, think of any questions that you might want to ask, because I forgot to give you that opportunity. Okay, so unless there are any further questions, we will now move on to our third candidate of the evening, and that is, uh, Mr. Serge Hadad. Uh, thank you, Serge, for joining us. I see you right there in the middle of the screen, uh, ready to go. So, um, you've kind of listened, I'm sure, what's going on, so you kind of know the drill. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you to tell us all about yourself, what you've been doing, what you plan on doing, and, uh, and you might want to throw in that kids are doing as well, because I'm sure we're all interested. So, go ahead.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Chavez, Mayor Protemu, Councilmember Sternquist, Councilmember Mann, city staff, and my fellow nominees, and also all the people listening, um, online. I just want to tell you a little bit about me. Uh, I'm a licensed professional civil engineer. My wife and I are proud Temple City residents since 2011. I'm a father of two young boys, Maxwell and Zachary. Both of them are born and raised here in Temple City. Uh, I want to thank you for this opportunity to interview. I listened to last week's council meeting, and I appreciate the level of care you all have for selecting the, the right person, especially now during this COVID crisis. Um, when Councilmember Mann called me the Saturday before last, I told him I was happy to help. I was able to give him this answer because I already had plenty of time to think about it. Five years ago, Mayor Protemu reached out to me. He encouraged me to consider running for city council should he term out. Um, so I started to organize myself for that possibility. Fortunately, um, the Temple City Accountability Act passed, term limits were adjusted, and he was able to continue serving us. His encouragement, though, was meaningful, and it was a turning point that better prepared me for this role. So council members, um, set policy, right? And they seek out subject matter experts, evaluating their recommendations to find vulnerabilities. So I already do that every day. And my job, my primary focus is delivering safe, high-quality drinking water to Los Angeles. I lead multiple teams of subject matter experts, and I oversee a multimillion-dollar budget. Public health protection means that the stakes are high, the science is technical, the budgets are complex, and the public perception is mixed. I review reports and recommendations by all types of experts, from scientists and attorneys to public relations specialists and accountants. I have to identify vulnerabilities before I set the best policies. I also know that council members must be excellent collaborators. We may not always agree with each other or with our constituents, but we can leverage our collective wisdom to find a resolution. I have firsthand experience with that in my capacity as a transportation and public safety commissioner, as well as a planning commissioner. Like you, I've been on the receiving end of public protests around land use and citations. Um, one example that comes to mind is a cell phone tower that was going to go up at a church. A dozen or so residents came out and protested. Uh, they were concerned about their safety, and the meeting was a little contentious. After the staff's report and public comment closed, Chairman Tom O'Leary turned to me first. He wanted me to initiate final comments. More recently, Commissioner O'Leary has told me that he trusts my judgment, my tone, and my approach to addressing difficult subjects. That is why he started with me first. The motion passed. I doubt I swayed all the protesters, but after the meeting, I was approached by the church's representative. She thanked me for being able to frame the situation and articulate the benefits to the city. And finally, I believe council members must inspire confidence, especially during uncertain times. My whole life has been about public engagement, informing people and inspiring them to value the services available. I was entrusted early in my career by the city engineer to be the Los Angeles City Council Liaison. I served as president of the largest civil engineering branch in ASCE, the Metropolitan Los Angeles Branch. I co-founded and led a national nonprofit organization that develops university students and alumni academically and professionally. It's fourteen years strong today. I also taught upper-level engineering classes at Loyola Marymount University for seven years. Being a teacher has been one of the most challenging and most rewarding experiences in my life. I accepted this nomination because I believe I can bring added value to this body. Collectively, the four of you on the city council bring over thirty-five years of institutional experience. If you believe that more of that same experience will serve the city better, then selecting one of my fellow nominees is the obvious choice. If, however, you prefer to bring in a fresh voice, someone that has helped shape the current plans for the future of our city, someone that has already established good relationships with staff, someone that volunteers to protect his community through CERT, and is committed to ensuring Temple City thrive, not just survive during this time, then I'm the ideal nominee for your vote, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, um, we will first start with, uh, Councilmember Sternquist with any questions?
Yes. Hi, Serge.
Hi, Councilmember, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Um, same question to you. I mean, I, I was reading, uh, your bio, and it's extremely impressive as both Peter Zobak is and Fernando Viscara. With that being said, with the things that you're involved with, do you have the time to commit to be the type of council member that I so seek to replace Councilmember Fish, that will be present in our community, um, you know, have the ability to possibly, well, attend a seven o'clock foothill transit meeting? Um, most of the meetings that were held in the evening have now moved to the daytime just because so many people felt they needed to go home and be with their families in the evening. So that has been a change in, um, the way many of the, uh, liaison groups have worked. So do you have the time and will you be committed to be that type of council member?
Excellent, um, question. Um, and yeah, it's important that we have the time to devote to what we commit to. And I promise you that if I do get appointed, I do have the time to commit to this, and I'll explain why. Um, I've been involved in multiple organizations and committees throughout my life. I'm currently an Orotarian. We meet, um, almost on a weekly basis for different activities. I'm on multiple committees and subcommittees. One of the secrets that I have, as some of you know, as I have an amazing wife, she is definitely, uh, the engine in my house that helps me, uh, keep things in order. But beyond that, um, we really utilize the technology that we have, uh, access to today to calendarize our differences, our, our different, um, conflicts and schedules. But currently, um, in my job right now, I'm a salaried employee. I'm not hourly. Uh, I was recently promoted a couple of years ago to this position. So I don't necessarily have to stay between that eight to five timeframe. Um, and I've also made, uh, notice to all of my, um, commitments right now from the organizations that I, I commit to and the involvement I have with multiple people, to let them know that, should I be appointed to this position, this will be my priority, and everything else will have to take a backseat. And I'll tell you, everybody was more than supportive for me to take on this advantage because they believe in me and they believe that I can contribute to the benefit of, of this city, where my kids are gonna grow up. And, and in addition, my wife, she, well, she, we got, and I had some of the greatest in-laws on the planet. Uh, my mother-in-law, my father-in-law, her brother-in-law and sister-in-law have been outstanding, uh, supporters. In fact, they probably know how to raise my kids a little better than me, but, you know, we'll, we'll decide. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Serge. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mann?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Chavez, and thank you, Serge, for, um, being willing to be considered as a candidate and your interest in this. Um, uh, I, I'm gonna ask you a similar question that I asked the previous candidates, and, um, yes, you know, we're, we're all dealing with COVID-19. I think in your capacity on the city side, I'm sure that's impacted a lot of decision-making as well. Um, given your understanding of current council policy, as well as the way the cur, the city currently operates, uh, in, in our capacity as a contract city, um, can you name one or two things that you think the city would have to change or adapt, both policy-wise or operation-wise, as we emerge from this COVID-19 crisis? Granted, we don't, um, we don't know a lot of things in the future. We can't predict it, but, um, give it your best shot.
Absolutely. I think there's an opportunity here to learn from other cities as well. Um, this has happened before in our history in different parts of the world and different parts of the country. So it's not necessarily we have to reinvent the wheel to find solutions. But with that said, um, about a week ago, when you, you know, a week or so ago, and I was taught, told that I might be on this position, I wanted to start doing my homework, hit the ground running, so to speak. Um, some of the things that came to my mind were repurposing some of our assets that we have currently in Temple City. Um, one of the things that, uh, as an example, was Dial-A-Ride. If you guys know Dial-A-Ride picks up the senior citizens and takes them to their destinations throughout the city. Um, it's a great program, but we can't really utilize it right now during this pandemic, um, because it takes a vulnerable population and exposes them unnecessarily to things. But our small businesses need to continue to operate, right? So one of the overhead costs that they have currently is delivery or curbside pickup. Perhaps we can repurpose some of our assets like Dial-A-Ride to assist in delivering our local businesses to our local residents, maybe just our senior citizens at first as a pilot program, and then expanding it. So that was just one idea that I came up with in order to look at things a little bit differently. In addition to that, COVID is horrible. Nobody is enjoying working from home very much, I guess. I mean, I guess, at least I am not as much as people. But it has forced us to accelerate one thing. We know that we've been moving on a trajectory that's more technological, right? Those that weren't, um, up to speed with what that technology can offer are quickly learning fast. So how can the city support businesses, support other companies or other residents in learning about the technologies that are already available to them so that they can build off of that knowledge, not only during the pandemic, but help us thrive into the future after the pandemic is resolved? So if that helps, uh, put kind of like, guide you where my mind's going, it's not just for the short term, because there are a lot of things we can do now. It's also, what are we gonna do in the future? Because really, that's, that's more important to me, is my kids getting the benefit out of this, moving on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mann. Uh, Mayor Protemu?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mr. Hadad. Uh, good to see you. Uh, Rick Bolle, and, and really, thank you for your service. Thank you for your energy. I mean, one thing I really like working with you is your energy. And you're right, um, I think that, at least for me, it's gonna be one of the key questions to ask tonight is whether you want more of the, uh, experiences or you want, um, new ideas. But speaking of new ideas, let me ask you, um, what's your vision for the city? Um, I've been here not thirty years. New ideas.
No, I mean, I, I think, I think the, the history that, um, we have is rich. I really do. Um, I was fortunate enough to be on the planning commission, chairing the planning commission, when the, uh, a general plan came about, the Crossroads Pacific Plan came out, Make TC Happen website, all the workshops that we got with this, with the community. And we got to see what our residents and our business owners want. You know, they want more walkability, more sustainability, more livability programs. And I have experiences in a lot of those arenas, um, because of my job in water, in the Department of Water and Power. We have to develop more, um, we have to invest in more, um, greener spaces, more destination locations. If, if, one thing that I really hope to do, I know Kmart's been brought up a lot, um, the future, at least as we're observing it now, we can order everything online. Everything can come to us for the most part. When people want to leave their homes, they want to go somewhere that's a destination location, right? And those brick-and-mortar mom-and-pop shops need that walk-in traffic in that areas to, to market to their customers. So what can we do to beautify our city, make it more of an attraction to the local residents in order for people to maybe take a bike over there, more bikeway paths, and enjoy the outdoors, enjoy the art, enjoy the agricultural aspect that our city can provide? We are, we are right in the middle of four freeways. Like, when people ask me, "Where's Temple City?", I always tell them, "We're right in the middle of the Four Freeway Cube." And that gives us a lot of opportunities because we have a lot of neighbors around us that can come into our city and buy things so we can pull, you know, revenue from them as well. So I, I, I can go on for a long time about it, but mainly sustainability and livability and walkability, all underneath the scope of public safety. That's what I hope.
That is.
Um, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a follow-up question? Uh, Mr. Hadad, um, I, I know you're a manager at the, at the city, but, um, what's your experience with, uh, budgeting or finance?
Right, right. Well, at my level, I'm, I have to look at budgets at a programmatic level, not at the project level. So, um, we have to look at what the goals are that have been set forth by the department's, uh, leadership, um, whether it's, uh, to conserve water, to buy resources like extra supplies, or invest in, uh, energy-efficient types of devices, as well as water-efficient types of devices. So we need to look at employment, full-time employees, how many hours they need to work, how much, um, uh, resources we can do outsourcing, how much we have to do in-house. We have to balance that, obviously, with our labor unions. Um, we gotta tell them that some things require expertise from the outside or for a short period of time building. So I've been on the project delivery side of project So I've been on the project delivery side of projects where I've had to do class A, B, and C estimates um on projects. I've also had to look at, um, you know, fiscal job numbers. We got to look at a rate. One of the most complicated things anybody can, I don't, I think it's still kind of a mystery sometimes, rates uh when you get your bill. There's so many uh legal requirements, regulations, things that customers don't realize, uh, you need to pay in order to get that water to your tap. So I um, there there's a lot of expertise. And like I said in my opening statements, I I I'm an expert in certain areas, but I also know that as a leader, I need to be a person that finds subject matter experts and listen to them and look for the vulnerabilities that they bring us, bring to us, asking the questions. And I think that's the ideal way a city council can run because everybody wants to get to the best idea. I want to contribute to the ideas that are there. We may not always agree, but you know, challenging each other, having that discourse really comes out with a positive thing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, one of the advantages or disadvantages of going last is sometimes all the questions are taken and all the answers are made. So um, I don't have anything to follow up. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist, did you have any follow-up questions?
I do, I have two if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first one is Serge, you mentioned um or made reference to technology that there's new ways of, you know, doing things through the use of technology. Something that I have found, I I guess it's a little bit astounding, but it's one of those things that you learn as you go. And this COVID-19 situation has taught me that thank goodness for technology because we're able to do this Zoom meeting and these interviews right now. And although I'm not a pro at technology, I have wanted to engage myself and and learn as much as I can about it because I know how important it is. On the other hand, you also learned from this COVID-19 quarantine that we really miss engaging with people and places and things. So someone might say, well, you know, the younger people and um fortunately, I can say you're the one of the younger candidates and that's not a bad thing, but that you generationally are much more adept in technology than some of the older folks. But with that being said, how do you feel that there's a balance to this? Because I think it's easy to say, well, technology is the future. You know, Dial-A-Ride might be the way of the past and and there's new ways to engage, which there are to make it. And Mr. Cook and I have been talking about this for quite some time about the Dial-A-Ride program. But how do you feel you you balance that when we've learned that technology through this process is so extremely important? But on the other hand, people are craving to engage with one another. What's the balance there? How do you not go over the you know, one way or?
Yeah, now I I I don't know if you know, I'm like a social butterfly. I love audiences, I love people, I love getting my hands dirty with others. So I'm not, I'm not at all suggesting that technology should replace that uh person-to-person connection. It should supplement it. And in fact, it could even make it more rich if we do it right. Um, we got to be careful about it as well. Um, one of the predictions that I've had, you know, uh, about what the future could hold for for our work-life is maybe we don't telecommute every single day, but maybe one day a week we telecommute. And there's um great benefits that come from that. There's less traffic on our roadways, there's cleaner air, there's more time with my family. I've gotten to spend a lot of time with my kids that I otherwise would not have had just because I'm at the office. There's also less overhead for businesses. So it's all about strategically planning and how to roll things out. And again, it's about soliciting the expert advice of others, looking at other models in different parts of the world and do not doing the same mistakes that they may have done. And again, it goes back to my idea of and the Temple City idea actually of livability communities. To me, that means we are a community. For example, in my neighborhood, I have a block party with my neighbor for all the Atlantia residents where I live. Um, every four months, it's been one of the best things that we've ever done because it really eliminates that negative first impression where you only talk to your neighbor when there's a problem. You build a friendship early on and then from there you can resolve problems together collaboratively.
Thank you, Serge. Oh, the second question. Um, I forgot, so it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Tom, I can't hear you.
Mr. Mayor?
Doing the same thing that Vince did. Okay, so I was gonna say, um, you have one of those block parties. Uh, I expect to get an invite, uh, it sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah, I, some of you, I thought I invited and didn't show up, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Well, well, I
Yeah, we're busy. All right. Um, okay, any, any, any other council members have any follow-up questions? Uh, Councilmember Mann, uh, Mayor Potem, you?
Yeah, actually, I I do have one, Mayor Chavez. I'll I'll ask Councilmember Sternquist another follow-up question for the previous two candidates related to the budget. Um, I I know you kind of touched upon this with respect to repurposing, um, which which was, by the way, that's that's a creative idea. Um, is there anything else you can think of um based on your understanding of the city's current budget um that you could see opportunities in uh with respect to not just COVID-19, but everything in in general?
Yeah, so I did have a chance to read the budget report that was online, at least not every single word, but I skimmed through the points and reviewed the graphs. It looks like there's a predicted deficit in the next couple of years before COVID-19 even occurred. So I know that there are, maybe the assumptions were conservative and estimates like less revenue than we expect coming in or and I saw there was a 2% growth that wasn't part of it. I come, I'm a civil engineer and um budgets are a big deal for us from an infrastructure perspective. I spent a long time in in my volunteer world pushing initiatives to show that investment in infrastructure actually has a return on investment over the long period of time. So I would be very cautious to um stop investing in preventative maintenance. I think that might be something that people kind of do immediately because it's like if it's not going to hurt anybody in the short term, but it really has more complicated impacts over the long period of time because it gets more expensive to fix a road or fix a pipe um if you wait too long to to do it. So it's it's one approach that I hope to keep. Um, obviously, there's going to, if this situation gets worse, um, I know that there's um mixed reviews about what's going on with the real estate market and both short-term, long-term. My sister is a real estate agent and she called me right when COVID started that people were pulling out of uh buying homes e- even after they paid the initial fees to start the process because of the unknown. And um, I've talked to a few people in Temple City about what's the worst thing? It's the lack of not knowing what's going to happen. So back to your question, um, Councilmember Mann, you know, infrastructure investment, I think will pay off in the long run. I think this council, this one and the ones in the past has done a tremendous job to keep making sure that we have reserves to help us stay afloat for a little bit. Um, but I think we got to look at ways that isn't just cutting a check to business owners only. It's to keep them afloat. Um, it's maybe looking for ways to invest in them so that they can survive this and thrive past past the COVID. And and I hope that kind of sets up answer for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any follow-up questions? Okay, do you have any questions for us, uh, Serge?
Not a question. Uh, is it okay if I just share one more thing because I'm the non-elected person? Okay, so um, basically, when I got this call, um, I thought, great, I don't have to campaign, right? I thought that's going to be awesome. But I realized a little bit later after thinking that, that how unfair that was. And it's not just unfair to my other candidates that had to campaign or nominees that had to campaign, but to our constituents. Um, it's important to hear their thoughts, their feedback and concerns about the city. So in the short window of time I was given, I did do uh as much of an effort as I could to call uh fifteen neighbors that I knew, four commissioners, the Chamber of Commerce and several businesses. I reached out to them. I also talked to like Jerry Jan-Bazian, Lucy Liu, who are pillars in our community. I asked them all, what are you concerned about? What are your hopes for the city? And uh, I'll be honest, I learned a lot from them and it was interesting to hear the similarities and also the unique um uniqueness of things. And a lot of the answers I gave you tonight, their voices were in my head. And I want to share a few of those really quickly. Uh, my neighbors, Raul and Maria Diaz, they moved to Temple City in nineteen seventy-eight and raised their three daughters here. They love Temple City and they asked, how can Temple City have more variety in restaurants? And could they have a batting cages for their grandchildren at Live Oak Park? Um, so I I tried to under-explain why, why those are sometimes challenging to get across, but I promised that I'd keep those requests in mind if I was appointed. I also talked to my other neighbors who we co-host that barbecue with. And unfortunately, recently, their house has been burglarized. They still love the city, but um they definitely have public safety in the front of their minds. Um, both Jerry and Lucy have told me that they want to improve the school district relationship, which I did not realize um we should focus on to in in improve. And I hope that if appointed, I have a chance to do that. Um, and then finally, I reached out to former member, Councilmember Carl Bloom. Um, Carl has known me for two decades. I met with him when I was in college, uh, and he mentored me throughout my career. Um, when my wife and I bought our house, Carl asked us to sign up for the First Citizens Academy. Uh, he pushed me to apply to both commissions. And he told me that the council members were invested in succession planning to help Temple City thrive for generations to come and that he supports my nominations. So I know I'll add value and I know that I'll learn from all of you if appointed so that for years to come, I can continue your initiatives moving forward. Temple City is my home and I'm prepared for this moment and this role. Thank you.
Thank you, Serge.
So uh, so thank you. Uh, in the law, we call that a closing uh argument. And since I did not give anyone else the opportunity to make a closing argument, I will now do so. So um, let me go back to um to uh Zovak, I understand he's joined us again. And Peter, do you have any last comments or questions that you would like to make to the council?
Um, no, I I think that we were able to get through uh as much information as possible, at least uh me communicating my interest in the position. I want to thank everybody for their interest. I also want to thank Serge and Fernando for stepping up as well. Um, because it is not easy uh to do and it is a time commitment and 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 all that. I do want to compliment, you know, I had mentioned, um, you know, in previous years, I did not run or or seek to run again. And a lot of that was because I saw at least in the last eight to ten years, a lot of positive forward movement. I think you should be complimented uh for that. Um, uh, adding a new mini park to the portfolio, the first time in a long time, I think is a huge accomplishment and you should get some recognition for that. Uh, when I was on council, I was a big supporter of the library. And I love the fact that the renovation expansion project has gone forward as much needed. Um, and I point to not only the agency I work for, but other agencies as well on the Connect Magazine, probably one of the best publications for getting information out and getting it out in a very interesting way that has been uh out there for a while. And so, I mean, those are all just things, when you see something good, you should say it. So I just wanted to let you know, those are some of the things I'm very impressed with. And I'd be more than happy to uh help serve on the council and move and continue to move things like that forward. And that's what I'm I'm really looking for, for quality uh projects and programs and moving them forward. So thank you, everyone.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, Fernando, any last comments, question?
No, I I would just like to thank all of you for the opportunity. Um, when um, when, when, when Nan left and I heard about it, I thought, oh, well, I'll just here's another place and time that I can, I can serve in and I think serve effectively. So that was, I I threw my hat in the ring. And I appreciate all, all of you uh hosting these interviews and uh the fact that you gave us the attention you did.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're prepared before we make, before I entertain a motion. Tom, there's a lot of background noise. Yeah, yeah, I just heard it. So somebody, somebody needs a mute. Um, okay, so before we go to a council motion, I would like to entertain any last comment. I will start first with Councilmember Mann. Uh, Councilmember, would you like to make any final comments?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor Chavez. Um, uh, first of all, I I do want to thank all three candidates for uh being willing to uh step up. I think um, when I first found out that Councilmember Fish had resigned, um, the initial fear was, oh, my goodness, what are we going to do? Um, but then as I thought more about it in in the short time that we had and and being able to talk to a lot of people, um, and a lot of people reaching out to me about the situation, um, I realized that we actually have no shortage of good candidates, which I think tonight uh fully demonstrated, um, three very strong and qualified candidates. So that that's, uh, I mean, that's a compliment to all three of you. Um, and the three bring three very unique and different perspectives and strengths. Um, I was very impressed with uh Peter Zovak. Uh, he has a lot of municipal experience. Um, and I think it's important that his experience was at a local level. With the, he said twenty-one years at the city of Glendale. Um, and so I think he's very much in touch with at least the current issues that municipalities are facing with, which I think is a, it's a great strength. And of course, um, having served on council and as mayor, um, is an experience that um doesn't need more commenting further. Uh, I think that that in itself speaks, speaks, stands on its own. Um, and I appreciate his uh commentary on on my question regarding COVID-19. Um, he did point out a very key piece, uh, the Kmart Plaza. And he mentioned the important piece of uh working with other agencies and counties. So so I I agree with him on on all those issues. And I think he he demonstrated a very solid understanding um of what our city needs and and uh what we, what type of relationships we need to develop moving forward. Uh, with Mr. Fernando Viscara, again, someone who has served on council, um, three full terms and if I, I'm not sure how many terms as mayor, but probably three terms as mayor as well. Um, and that again stands on its, on its own. And in fact, um, it it was him terming out last time that that opened up the opportunity for me to run and uh and be elected on city council. Um, I think his incredible amount of experience, not just on the council policy level, but also his work as a high-level administrator on the county side. Um, as as we've alluded to before, um, it's great to have someone who can hit the ground running. And I think he very much fills that criteria easily as someone who's not only well aware of how our city operates, but he's gone through many cycles of not just the budget, but also other important policy decisions. Um, something that wasn't really mentioned, but to me stood out, um, is the fact that um, Mr. Viscara was on council during our last crisis. Um, I don't think we need to really talk about what that crisis was. I think we all know. Um, and and now we're dealing with a, albeit a different type of crisis, um, not, not a, not a political crisis, but a a public health crisis. Um, but I think having someone with that experience, um, leading the city through crisis is invaluable. Um, I know it wasn't mentioned, but I think for me in, when, when we were told uh what the three nominees were, um, that to me was was uh an important thing that that separated him from, from the other candidates. Um, and of course, I think uh I don't need to talk about his uh dedication to a lot of our community organizations. Um, and I I really, the one part I really appreciate was a Councilmember Sternquist bringing up sort of the um, the idea of what did we lose when Councilmember Fish resigned? And who can fill that gap? Um, and I I asked myself that same question too. And so I I think with Fernando demonstrating his continued dedication to our community and Kiwanis and Camila Festival and a lot of other things, um, I think he also fills that criteria very easily. Um, with Mr. Serge Hadad, um, speaking of um folks who are also dedicated um and and up to speed with current events, um, although being the only nominee that hasn't served on council, I think his service on I think his service on the planning commission and the public safety and transportation commission were uh, was exemplary and is exemplary. Um, having been through the G-PAC myself personally before on council, I understand the responsibility that you've had to carry in making those decisions and deliberations as a member of the planning commission. So um, I also really appreciated um, his responses to my questions. I thought, um, while we don't know the, the practical nature of repurposing Dolarite to delivery services, I, I think that's an example of the type of creative thinking that we need to respond in, in the COVID-19 crisis. So um, and, and your mention of technological curve, I could also appreciate cause I think we're all experiencing that now. Um, and then how exactly do we extend that? I thought, um, I think, I think your line of thinking is very much on point in what we as a city have to grapple with as we emerge from COVID-19. Um, and I think maybe the thing that's struck, struck out, uh, struck me most, um, because it resonates with me personally more is uh, Mr. Hadad's ability to um, your ability to kind of really describe what young working families are struggling with and dealing with during the current crisis. Um, this idea of work-life balance is, I mean, it's, it's almost like a cliche now, but it's, it's a real challenge for young families with young kids. Um, and I think having someone on council that is living it um, really does bring a very unique perspective to um, our, our legislative body as a city council. Um, so I thought that was a, a very unique uh, angle that um, that Mr. Hadad brought. Um, all in all, I think um, I'm, I'm in a unique position because two of the nominees um, I actually nominated, I know we had some overlapping nominations. Um, and I think um, with this interview, I still believe um, those two nominees uh, in, in my opinion, uh, stand out the most in terms of being able to fill that vacancy. Um, I think Mr. Viscara brings incredible strength and institutional knowledge and wisdom and experience, uh, which I completely agree would be great um, in our current situation. Which is, I mean, one of the many reasons why I nominate him. I thought he'd fill that in very well. Um, and Mr. Hadad, um, again, a different set of experiences, but also a different set of perspectives, um, which, you know, now we're dealing with an unprecedented crisis. Um, I think his creativity and unique perspective could be a great boon to our city council as well. Thank you, Mayor Chavez.
Thank you, and uh, thank you for those comment reminder. Those who uh, are, may not be selected tonight, uh, council member Man is available as a campaign manager for interview in the future, so. Good, good comments. Very well spoken. Thank you. Okay, so um, now we will move on to uh, council member Sternquist for any final comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm very grateful that I don't have to run against the three of you for a seat on city council. I think you're all um, amazing individuals. I think you all bring such a unique perspective um, to the council. Um, I agree with everything that um, council member Man shared. So I don't need to repeat those regarding each um, candidate. I will say that there is a particular candidate that I am looking for at this point in time that I feel can navigate us through this pandemic crisis with small businesses, has the experience. And you know, I, I taught history um, to elementary s- school students for quite some time. And one of the biggest things that I remember that if I saw kids five, 10 years after I taught them eighth grade history would say, Mrs. Sternquist, do you remember what you had up there on the board the whole year? And I'd say, what was that? I mean, my memory wasn't as good as theirs. And they'd say, history, basically, I can't remember it exactly, but it's something about history is the navigator of where we've been and where we want to go. And I take that to heart because without a strong knowledge of the history that we have as an institution or as even, you know, a family or whatever, you really, it's, it's difficult sometimes to navigate through those rough waters. And when we look back at history, it, it teaches you a lot. And I think for that reason, um, I think the other two candidates are amazing. But I'm going to stick with my gut and um, feel that Fernando Viscara is going to be a great navigator through these um, difficult times. And the experience that he has is invaluable.
Okay, thank you. And we have somebody with a little dog in the background uh, barking away.
That's me.
Is that you? No, no problem.
It is, yes.
Okay, uh, Mayor Protem, you?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo everything that's been said. And um, I want to really thank the three nominees for taking the time uh, to come tonight. I mean, we're three very, very qualified candidates. And um, and I still have the opinion, Mr. Adat, that uh, one day you should, uh, we should talk about campaigning. And, and I know the mayor suggested him, but I'll suggest myself as well to help you. If that becomes the case. Uh, and Mrs. Zovak, and uh, thank you for all that, you know, experience. I remember, actually, you, you're one of the reason why I'm on the council today. Actually, I remember asking you if you were gonna run and you were not running. That's why I ran um, way back when, so. And obviously you got great experiences. Um, however, I think um, we're in a very unique situation today. Um, perhaps i- i- in some of you, uh, and appreciated the, to talk about, this is analogous to like the Great Depression. And I read, um, I did a little research, not a history person, but I did a little research in 1918, the great influenza, the impact on the nation and all that. And I have to say that perhaps because myself is a county manager, uh, dealing with budgeting and all that, I am hearing things that are, that of a, a lot of concern for myself. Um, I believe the road ahead is uh, it's, it's gonna be difficult and we need, we need a lot of um, uh, experiences uh, working together. And I remember the days when um, Mr. Viscara was on the council and um, I think we served maybe two terms together, perhaps. There were many times I actually disagreed with him. And he was uh, many times a four one vote on certain things, especially when it comes to personnel. But in looking back, those were the, the decision that actually he was right and we were wrong. And I really think that his experience in HR is gonna help us greatly through this process. Um, we um, we're gonna have some difficult decisions to make. And his knowledge, um, and leadership would be, I think, would be great help in helping the uh, council to make some very difficult uh, decisions. Um, and um, so having heard all three candidates or nominees, I think I will still, um, I mean, i- i- it's definitely a hard decision, but I think I would, I would stay with my original nomination, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I guess it's time for me, uh. Of course, uh, with much of what uh, my fellow council members have said before, I first want to thank all three candidates for their time and uh, and their interest, of course. Not an easy thing to do. Um, you know, I, 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 I write notes down to myself as I hear people talking and, and I keep coming back to uh, uh, some, some categories for all three. Uh, you know, all of, all of you are very strong individuals. Uh, all of you are very well spoken. All of you are articulate. Um, I think all of you come with uh, with experience and I, I think that includes Serge as well. Uh, now he doesn't have experience on the council, but I think he's demonstrated at an experienced level that uh, will suit him well uh, uh, being on the council, it's so chosen. Um, all of you are hardworking. I think all of you care a great deal about your community. And I believe all of you understand the issues, right? You know, that's what makes this decision very difficult. And lastly, you know, I think, I consider all three of you my friends and, and that makes it very difficult. Um, and I'm hoping that no matter what decision we make tonight, that uh, all three of you will remain my friends. And uh, uh, you know, not only friends, but mentors as well. But uh, you know, unfortunately, or at least, you know, I can't base my decision on friendship alone. I think uh, it's very important to look at, at what each individual will bring to the council. And although all of you have a lot of strong attributes, some of the things I'm looking at is uh, what energy level you have, what creative ideas you have. And um, you know, it's just, uh, I think in, in this particular world that we live today, uh, the norm, I don't know that we'll ever have the norm again. I think uh, as we move forward, it's gonna require very ma- very, very many creative decisions on our part. We're gonna have to think outside the box. Um, hopefully, uh, I as well as others can do that. And, but I think uh, that's the type of uh, of person that, that we really need. And, and uh, that's not to say that, that not all of you uh, don't, don't have that as well. I think each of you um, of course, have your own ideas about what is or is not good for the city. And, and you know, that's what makes a good council is that um, that, that uh, change, that uh, that difference, I think. And, and you know, I, I always like to say, I think was mentioned earlier about, I think Vince mentioned earlier, he didn't always agree with uh, with Fernando. And, and I think a, a lot of us uh, think like that, that, you know, that this council, I think if anything, has always shown that, that we can disagree, but not be disagreeable in doing it. And I, I think that uh, each of you, each of you have that personality. And you know, it is a very, very difficult decision. I mean, you know, take, take the decision that we make on our commissioners and multiply it times 10. That's what we're looking at right here. Um, this is a big decision, not only for us, but of course for the city. Because we are saying to the city, as Mr. Hadad pointed out earlier, you are gonna have this person basically for the next four years and you didn't elect him. Um, you know, that, that makes it a very important decision. And, and I think each of you have taken that on and each of you understand what that is all about. So uh, again, I appreciate your candidacy. I appreciate your remarks. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, albeit it would certainly be a lot better if we could do it in person, but doesn't allow us to do that today, so. Okay, so um, with that said, um, uh, I will now go ahead and entertain a motion. Uh, if, unless there are any other further questions or comments, uh, I think we are in the position of entertaining a motion. So is anybody out there would like to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, a motion to, to uh, appoint Mr. Viscara as a, as our uh, to fill the seat of uh, uh, council member.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Fernando Viscara to the open seat on the council. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So I'm gonna ask uh, our city clerk to please take a roll call at this time.
Ms. Mayor, council member Man?
Yes.
Council member Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Like I said, renders my vote kind of moot, but uh, I told you, there's always a back, uh, there's always yeah, a, a disadvantage to being last time. Um, let me, let me first say before I cast my vote here, and I will get to my vote, that again, this is a very difficult decision for me as well as my colleagues. Um, Fernando, who is my dear, dear friend and I miss our breakfasts together, believe me, um, is not my first choice, okay? And I say that only because I'm, I'm basing my decision on what I've heard tonight. Um, my, 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 my vote, at least based on what I've heard tonight, uh, would go to Mr. Hadad. However, um, we do have a three, three votes uh, in favor of Mr. Viscara. So that motion will pass. And um, unless there's any objection, um, that will be the order. Mr. Murphy, do you need anything further from us?
Yes, sir. Um, I need to read to you a resolution and I'm going to ask you to pass that by a new roll call motion. I want to read it into the record. Um, normally we would have this present, but I think it's uh, worth the council's time to have the appointee be able to begin work immediately and prepare for the meeting next Tuesday, rather than having this resolution brought to you that day. If that's okay, sir, I'll read it in and then uh, you'd ask for a new roll call motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you.
Sir, uh, this is resolution number 20 dash 5471, a resolution of the city council of the city of Temple City, California, appointing Fernando Viscara to the city council for the remainder of the unexpired term of the seat deemed vacant due to the resignation of Nanette Fish. Whereas Nanette Fish was duly appointed to and confirmed in the position of city council of the city of Temple City on December 17th, 2019. And whereas the term of office to which Ms. Fish was appointed will, in accordance with the city charter and the laws of the state of California, expire on March 5, 2024. And whereas Ms. Fish filed a written letter of resignation effective upon receipt with the city on April 21, 2020. And whereas pursuant to section 505C of the city charter, Ms. Fish's office and seat on the city council was deemed vacated. And whereas pursuant to section 602 of the city charter, the city council by a unanimous vote of its remaining members, after due deliberation in an open session at its meeting of April 28th, 2020, determined to fill the vacancy through appointment by the city council of a qualifying member of the city. And whereas pursuant to section 602 of the city charter, the city council heard nominations from the city council and took public comments. And whereas based on the foregoing and in light of the information received and the deliberations had at its May 11th, 2020 meeting, the city council desires to make and hereby does make an appointment to fill the vacant office and seat of Nanette Fish as provided herein. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Temple City does hereby resolve as follows. Section one, determination of qualification. A, the city council hereby declares that Fernando Viscara meets the requirements to hold the office of city council member in the city of Temple City as set forth in section 502 of the city charter. B, the city council hereby declares that Fernando Viscara has the experience, commitment to the community and other qualities as determined by the city council in their capacity as elected representatives of the community to serve as a member of the city council of Temple City. Section two, appointment. The city council hereby appoints Fernando Viscara to the city council to fill for the remainder of the unexpired term, the vacated office and seat created by the resignation of Nanette Fish. The term will expire on March 5, 2024. Section three, authorized signature. The mayor or presiding officer is hereby authorized to affix his signature to this resolution, signifying its adoption and the city clerk or her duly appointed deputy is directed to attest thereto. And then we have the signature block. So sir, we would like a uh, motion to adopt resolution number 20 dash 5471.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I um, moved a uh, to adopt that motion as described by Mr. Stern.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, or is there any objection? Hearing none, Matt clerk, if you could please take roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Council member Man?
Yes.
Council member Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
And consistent with my previous remarks, I will say no. However, the motion passes three to one. And so the resolution will pass. Is that it for the business at hand tonight?
Sure it is.
Okay, Mr. City, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything else?
No, Mayor Chavez, I will be contacting newly appointed Councilmember Viscara shortly. And thank you to all those who participated today.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. Hold on one second. I just want to congratulate Fernando on his reappointment. Look forward to serving with you again and to all the, to the other two candidates. I very much appreciate your attendance tonight and you, you did, you had, each of you had a great showing. And you should be very proud of yourselves and, and hopefully we can find other ways to keep you involved in the city. I'm sure we'll be able to do that. So Vince, you said you had something you wanted to say?
No, I just want to personally thank Mr. Adat and Mrs. Zovak for their time and we appreciate it's a hard decision. And unfortunately, I can only make, pick one, so, but I really thank you for, for your interest.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so with that, we are adjourned.
Tom?
Yes.
I just want to be sure that you know, you all know that I appreciate this and thank you. I, I will, I will do my best to do justice to this commitment.
I, I know, I know you will. And again, I just wanted you to know, you know, that it is a difficult decision. And, and I really look forward to serving with you. And maybe one of these days in the future, I'll have the opportunity to serve with the other two candidates as well. So good luck to all of you. Stay safe, stay healthy and we'll talk to you soon. Take care.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.